Let's go ahead and call this meeting to order. Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We begin our meeting as we always do with public audience. Is there anyone who would like to speak at public audience? Joan.
Joan Coe, 26 Whitcomb Drive. Now that we're beginning a new chapter for Simsbury, I'm looking forward to having professional management with the town manager Maria Capriola. I would hope with the town manager that everyone is playing on a level playing field and the result of the playbook is distributing our tax dollars judiciously by eliminating special treatment for political operatives. I am concerned that our past was determined by a Democratic political affiliation under First Selectman Mary Glassman. The selection of our town attorney, Bob DiCrescenzo, from Updike Kelly &amp; Spellicy, was determined by his Democratic credentials as mayor of East Hartford. Mary Glassman's assistant, Paul Featherston, was chosen by Bob DiCrescenzo, who came from East Hartford. First Selectman Mary Glassman hired a headhunter from Connecticut Council Municipality, CMM, CCM, where Glassman was president, and another Democratic political operative to choose Shawn Kimball and Tom Cook as our assistants. First Selectman Lisa Hevner, Democrat, hired Melissa Appleby as assistant to the town manager, whose husband just recently left his job as director of communications for the state Democratic Party, to become a Malloy press secretary, as stated in the Hartford Current. I am not judging their ability to serve the town, but I am concerned that we have employees in executive positions that all come from the same background with the political bent. We have had a town attorney, Bob DiCrescenzo, a Democrat political operative for decades, while he has become a rainmaker for Updike Kelly &amp; Spellicy, the law firm for Ethel Walker School &amp; Silverman Group, developing the Hartford property. This conflict has caused the town to pay Attorney Houlihan thousands of dollars in fees to close the land deals that should have been done by DiCrescenzo as part of his monthly payment for service. Attorney Houlihan is a Democrat. It is also interesting to note that Attorney DiCrescenzo was also the agent for Simsbury Performing Arts with Dave Ryan, President, who is on the Democratic Town Committee. We now have Selectman Elaine Lang, a Democrat, discussing the Deepwater Solar Panel Array that is before the Siding Council when her divorce attorney is Pullman &amp; Comley, the law firm of record for Deepwater Solar. Mary Glassman's husband, a member of Pullman &amp; Comley, Selectman Elaine Lang, did not place this conflict on a conflict of interest form. On September 21st, 2017, I filed a complaint with the Board of Ethics. David Moore, Vice President, Democratic Party, and Chairman of the Board of Ethics, has not responded to my complaint. David Moore is probably preoccupied with writing thousands of dollars of checks to the Democratic Town Committee and hundred-dollar checks to candidates for office. Maybe David Moore is preoccupied by monitoring his son on dangers of drunk driving. However, David Moore, Chairman of the Board of Ethics, should respond to complaints in a timely manner. Recently, Tom Cook, Director of Administrative Services, stated that all non-union employees will get a 2% raise retroactive to July 1st, 2017, across the board. However, there were adjustments made mid-year to several employees in that group that increased their salaries substantially. Why would these employees given another 2% increase of taxpayers' money? Recently, there was much discussion about the application for a storyteller's college and a dumpster placement associated with the House that was held up for approval process. This went on for over six months, leaving the applicant without a temporary certificate of occupancy, start a business under the direction of Jamie Rabbit, town planner, while sorting out this problem. After much delay and loss of revenue, the dumpster remained in the same place, as noted on the application. Was the delay justified? Is Jamie Rabbit the face of Simsbury's approach to economic development? I question whether Simsbury Volunteer Ambulance should ask money to continue their service when Dom De La Henti, receiving its salary of $141,788 and their assets of $1,663,948, according to their tax filing. Over the years, there's been an increase in volume for volunteer services. Occasionally, there's a time delay during several calls for an ambulance and prioritization of services required when Gramby and Canton cannot supply services because volunteers are not available or on another call. Simsbury Police the first responders and report to the incident in timely manner. Since it is difficult to find volunteers for services and volume has increased, I would like to have AMR come before the Board of Selectmen to discuss an overview of their services. AMR is used by Avon in Farmington with paid staff. According to Brandon Robertson, Avon Town Manager, AMR has good response time, there are no complaints, and they did not receive any money from the town. AMO only requires a building supplied by the town for equipment. All of my comments will be posted on Simsbury Patch, News Feed on Facebook, Twitter at Joan Coe, and Simsbury Forum topics. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak? Mary Glassman.
Mary Glassman, 40, Fennec Mountain Road. It's good to see things haven't changed at the Board of Selectmen in Simsbury. First, I'd like to understand this is your last meeting as a constituent Board of Selectmen, and I would like to thank all of you for your service, and I would like to particularly thank Lisa Hevner and Elaine Lang for all your dedication and hard work. Believe me, I know how hard it is to be on the Board of Selectmen. I'd ask folks who are here tonight, please join in me and congratulate you both. And second, I would just like to give you a fundraising letter in my capacity as President of Simsbury Community Television. I hope that folks here and folks at home are watching this special night of your last meeting together and recognizing how hard you all work. And the ability to sit home and watch what's happening in your government is provided through the volunteers of Simsbury Community Television. As we recently saw up at the state Capitol, we can't take for granted community access and cable access, as we saw changes at the state level with trying to control how news is reported, how meetings are reported, and funding. So, we're here tonight, I'm joined with Dominique Avery, who is on the Board, and I thought Mark Orenstein, who's our Volunteer of the Year at Simsbury Community Television, and Woodah, who's watching from somewhere in the control room. We just wanted the community to know, we'll be sending out a fundraising letter. Simsbury Community Television only operates based on contributions and volunteers, so if you would consider gift giving before the end of the year, it's tax deductible. And I've been told to just tell you what some of the funds that we've used previously. Before our fundraising last year, we used new equipment here at Town Hall, so we have new high-definition telecameras, which Mark can explain how they work and where they are, which means that people can now watch Simsbury Cable on the website. So you can watch town meetings from anywhere you are, and we think that's good for local government. We also have new Board of Education room control equipment and upstairs in the production room. So, thank you for your time, thank you for your service, and I'll leave you with a little holiday treat and sweeten things up for the rest of your night. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak at public audience? Dave.
Thank you.
There's some seats up front if people want to join.
Madam First Selectman, thank you for recognizing me. My name is Attorney David Moore. I live at 18 Bob White Way in Weetog. The town rules and ethics rules require me to note the following before speaking to the Board of Selectmen. I am the current Chair of the Town of Simsbury Board of Ethics, the current Vice Chair of the Town of Simsbury Economic Development Commission, and the Vice Chair of the Simsbury Democratic Town Committee. I am not here in any official capacity for either of those organizations and rise to speak as a private individual. First, to this Board of Select People, congratulations on a highly successful search for a new town manager. You all have collectively acted in the best interests of the Town of Simsbury in acting so expeditiously and efficiently in finding good candidates for the new position and making a conditional offer to a person who appears to be a great candidate. You will have set a great beginning precedent that I hope that the new Board will follow. For that, I thank you. Second, to Deputy First Selectman Chris Kelly, Selectman Shawn Askman, Selectwoman Cheryl Cook, and Selectman Mike Payne, congratulations on your reelection. The fact that you have all demonstrated an ability to act in a bipartisan manner in furtherance of the best interests of the Town of Simsbury has played a large role, I believe, in your reelection, and that ability will serve you well in the coming term, as you and the new members of the Board will be working hard to establish precedents with the new town manager that will potentially last for generations. Good luck with that and with all that you do in the future, and please, don't blow it. Third, to Selectwoman Elaine Jorgensen-Lang, thank you for your service and your cooperative leadership. The collaboration and bipartisan efforts that you engaged in on this Board and other venues are but one measure of your efforts to finding the right solutions to the problems that our town has faced and serves as an example to the incoming Board. While you have served on this Board for but one term, your work in serving the town has the potential to have longstanding impact for the better, for our town. I know that you will continue to serve our community in a variety of ways that will continue to benefit Simsbury in the years to come, and for that, I thank you. Finally, to our current First Selectwoman, Lisa Hevner, I offer my thanks for your service to the Town of Simsbury, spanning from the PTA to the town's top elected position. As already noted, this Board has acted in a bipartisan, truly collaborative manner. That can only happen through effective leadership, and in particular, your leadership. Without your example of cooperative governing, the decisions and the budgeting would never have been as successful as they have been. Your leadership has been invaluable to this town. You assumed this office in very trying circumstances, with controversy swirling about, and you took the reins and you helped the Board to move forward constructively. Your budgeting skills and your ability to work with the Board of Education and the Board of Finance resulted in common sense budgeting and has been a huge reason why this town has been able to weather the financial crisis that has been created by Hartford. That is why I'm grateful that you will not be leaving public office, but have chosen to run for and to serve the Town of Simsbury through the Board of Finance, so we will still be able to benefit from your wisdom, both fiscal and general. Thank you for all that you have done and for all that you will do. Again, to this entire Board, thank you for all of your service to our beloved town, and thank you for allowing me to express my thanks to you all.
I see some dear friends out in the hall. Can we make some room for them to come in? Can we get a few extra chairs for them? These are some people who've been with me for 14 years. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak at public audience? Seeing none, we will go on to presentations. Lori.
Hi, Lori Fernand, 15 Camille Lane, and I'm sorry I arrived late, so I know I didn't hear some of the thank yous that already happened, but I just wanted to give a great shout out to both Lisa and Payne, and just thank you so much for your integrity, your intelligence, your commitment to Simsbury, and I'm thrilled to see what both of you do next. So, thanks so much, and congratulations to the rest of the Board for returning this next time. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Lori. All right. Ready to close public audience? All right, moving on. We'll go on to presentations, and tonight is actually a very special night because we have two presentations to citizens for extraordinary services to the Town of Simsbury and our community. Teddy Roosevelt said it much better than I ever could back in 1910 when he talked about the importance of citizenship to a democracy. He said, "In the long run, success or failure of the nation will be conditioned upon the way in which the average man, the average woman, does his or her duty, first in the ordinary, everyday affairs of life, and next in those great occasional cries for heroic virtues." The average citizen must be a good citizen if our republics are to survive. Today, we are recognizing Marguerite Carnell and David Coolidge as extraordinarily good citizens, both of whom represent the highest ideals of citizenship in our democracy and answering the call to duty when our community needed them most. I'll start with Marguerite. Marguerite lent her vast expertise to the town throughout the Deepwater Wind Siding Council petition process. She advised council, staff, me, and the Board in helping to formulate town positions, reviewed copious materials—when I say copious, the materials were literally this thick—prepared letters and testimony, sat through countless hours of hearings—which were not that fun—well above anything that we could have reasonably expected or that she could have reasonably anticipated when she answered the call to volunteer and serve on the Simsbury Historic District Commission as the Vice Chair. She was nothing short of heroic in her efforts, and we are grateful. We have a proclamation—I'm going to ask Mike to read it because you were with us with Marguerite, had a few meals with Marguerite.
Yeah.
The Good Thai Restaurant.
More than pleased to, and I think you were a little short. I think it was closer.
Right.
Huge amount of paper. It is my pleasure to read this proclamation. Whereas Marguerite Carnell has committed herself to the field of historic preservation and cultural resource management, received a bachelor's degree in design and resource management, a master's in philosophy for American Civilization, PhD programs in historic preservation, material culture, and architectural, religious, cultural, and women's history, and graduate courses in architectural conservation, and—whereas Marguerite has decades of experience in this field, including her current role as architectural historian with— Archaeological, thank you—and Historic Services Incorporated, and Marguerite has served as Vice Chair for the Simsbury Historic District Commission since 2013, and—whereas the Historic District Commission conducted a thoughtful review of the Tobacco Valley Solar Project and provided critical feedback on its potential impact on the town's archaeological, architectural, cultural, and historic resources, and—whereas Marguerite volunteered her time and expertise to represent the Historic District Commission and the Town of Simsbury at the Connecticut Siding Council Hearing, and—whereas Marguerite represented the highest ideals of citizenship in our democracy and answering the call to duty when her community needed her most. Whereas the dedication that Marguerite demonstrated to the town deserves the highest degree of appreciation and that you, as First Selectwoman, can bestow on an individual. Now therefore, I, she, Lisa L. Hevner—just seems wrong, I'm sorry. First Selectwoman of the Town of Simsbury do hereby recognize Monday, November 27th, 2017, as Marguerite Carnell Day in the Town of Simsbury. We are grateful to Marguerite for her commitment to the protection of the town's historic and cultural resources, and witness thereof, I place—she places her seal and the great seal of the Town of Simsbury dated the 27th day of November 2017. Lisa L. Hevner, First Selectwoman.
Now we're going to make Marguerite come up for a picture.
Come on down.
We're totally doing a picture. Tom, can you—come on in front of the Board. We'll get everyone.
This is a really big deal what she did, and it was done—most people didn't see what she did, no matter what she put in, but we could not have gone through this whole process with the Siding Council without—where's the proclamation? You can open it.
We're all looking back here.
You got the Swakmen in there too, Jane?
Yes, we never.
Nice smiling, huh?
All right. Thank you.
It's my pleasure to serve.
The second person we are recognizing tonight is David Coolidge. David serves as the Town Moderator of Elections. He expertly and fairly led four—and let me just say this, folks, that is a lot. Four is a lot—of close vote recount efforts on November—for the November 7th election, preserving the integrity of the election process in a professional and unbiased manner, and giving all confidence that democracy is alive and well in Simsbury. This is not insignificant—you've seen it in the news when it goes awry, it makes national news—that he handled this expertly and so professionally and in such a bipartisan manner, working with both registrars and voters, the Democrat and the Republican, who—I think Karen's here, I thought.
Karen's in the back.
Karen and Michelle—is Michelle here? No, no. Karen, I don't know if you wanted to add to that.
I just want to say that, Dave, we could not have done this without you. Huge undertaking, and your steady leadership helped the process go more smoothly than we could ever imagine.
So, he answered the call and then was asked to go above and beyond, so.
Okay. Whereas David Coolidge is a longtime resident of the Town of Simsbury, where he and his wife Caroline raised their son Cameron, and David had a long and honorable career in the Coast Guard, and whereas David continues to demonstrate his commitment to public service as a substitute teacher in the Simsbury Public Schools, as well as an election moderator for the town, and whereas David served as head moderator for both the November 7th, 2017 municipal elections, as well as the close vote recanvass that followed on November 14th, 2017, and whereas David dedicated his time and expertise to ensure that the elections process was conducted fairly and with integrity, and whereas David represents the highest ideals of citizenship in our democracy and answering the call to duty when his community needed him, whereas David deserves the highest degree of appreciation that I— or her, Lisa, as First Selectwoman, can bestow on an individual. Now therefore, I, Lisa L. Hevner, First Selectwoman of the Town of Simsbury, do hereby recognize Tuesday, November 28th, 2017, as David Coolidge Day in the Town of Simsbury. We are grateful to David for his service to the town. And witness thereof, I place my seal and the great seal of the Town of Simsbury.
We'll do the same thing.
Don't trip on the purse. Don't trip on the purse straps.
He can steer by there.
Hold it up.
Picture, make sure we got them all in there, too. So I'm going to keep going. We have two people who are leaving the Board that I'd like to recognize as well. The first is the person who has served the Board in capacity of staff and is Director of Administrative Services and HR Personnel, and generally counselor extraordinaire—I guess I will put it that way—has been a great to have along with this crazy journey we've been on together for many years. But what people may not know about Mr. Cook is that he is a member of a nationally recognized coral group that is being considered for a Grammy Award this year. So—and he also worked very hard—he and I worked very hard, and then he went on without me with the Performing Arts Center Board on the master planning that began, gosh, almost seven years ago, and continues working with the Performing Arts Center Board. Dave Ryan, I'd like to recognize him here, Kathy Barnard, anyone else from the Performing Arts Center Board here? I missed. And the many others who work so hard on that Board, and it's an all-volunteer Board, and we appreciate all you do, and Tom, we appreciate the help that you've given that Board. So we did want to give you a couple of things.
You gotta stand up.
Yep.
And this, I thought, what better than the Performing Arts Center?
That's true.
And we have a card—I guess I should have taken out of the plastic, right?
Thank you, that's wonderful.
Should we take a picture over the whole?
All right, well do a picture with Tom.
Take your picture with Tom.
Just picture it out.
Take a few more. Yeah, you could see.
Thank you all very much.
If I can, Lisa, I just want to say what a real pleasure it has been to work with this Board. It's been quite a year or two. We've got a lot of things done in the last stretch here, but I am so grateful to all of you for the wonderful working relationships that we've shared, and I wish you Godspeed with what comes next.
Thank you. Lastly, we have a gift for Elaine, who has served this Board in a remarkable and extraordinary way. She brought with her expertise on Simsbury's history and constitutional law, and what people may not know is she was actually a major advisor at the Connecticut Siding Council on the history of Dr. Martin Luther King. We used her expertise, and she attended all the meetings to assist council during that process. I think the thing that's so extraordinary about all these people that we're recognizing tonight is they've done extraordinary things, and you might not know about it. So tonight, it is our pleasure to recognize that, to thank you. You have been a personal friend, a personal support to me. I'm not going to tell you I'm going to miss you because that's not happening.
We've already planned—sorry, spoiler alert for the rest of you, we're—your Budget Workshop Day, we—Lisa and I have a Spa Day planned, and we're going to taunt you all that Saturday.
But I know, Elaine, you will continue your service to the town because you have done so as President of the Historical Society and active— you helped me just tremendously along the way, and I'm personally grateful, and I know the whole Board has appreciated working with you, and we thank you for your service. So, thank you, Elaine.
Thank you so much. You're like the little kid at a birthday party. I don't know. You sure brought Ellie to do this for me. You want the book? Yeah. There you go. It's the tree, it's the Pincho Sycamore pendant specially available at— and did you know that I have actually been hinting to various—my children to buy this for me for like years?
Well, let's come get a picture.
My colleagues on the Board of Selectmen now have outpaced my children in finally taking the hint and getting me the Pincho Sycamore beautiful necklace. [inaudible]
Yeah, let's get everyone all together, since it's a full Board. Come on in.
Stick with what we're good at.
Tough night.
Thank you, Mom. So much, Mom. Thank you very much, all of you. Very sweet.
So I do have a few words to say to all of you, but I'll do that during my First Selectmen's Report, so I'll break it up a little bit.
Shawn's waiting for that eagerly.
You're not off the hook yet.
We do have a few presentations tonight, and they are being shown first to the Board of Selectmen, and they are drafts that will go out to the public, their works in progress, where we welcome input, we welcome feedback. The first we have during your presentation tonight is Sarah Lawton-Slock. Oh, I forgot, John. John wanted to do a presentation, so we'll do that first if there's no objection. John.
I'm so honored to be here this evening. Senator Whitkos was going to join me, but he's detained at the Capitol, but we wanted to be here to celebrate two extraordinary women who have served this town with distinction. And I wanted to start with Elaine Lang, a fellow townie who loves this town, and she also loves Hamilton. Not sure if you know how much she loves Hamilton. So I was going through some quotes from Hamilton that match her exactly. Quote one, "You want a revolution? I want a revelation. So listen to my declaration: We hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men are created equal, and when I meet Thomas Jefferson, I'm compelled to compel him to include women in the sequel. I'm just like my country; I'm young, scrappy, and hungry, and I'm not throwing away my shot. Why do you write like you're running out of time? Write every day like you're running out of time. Every day you fight like you're running out of time. And what is legacy? It's planting seeds in the garden you will never get to see. Your legacy will be huge." Your legacy will be huge. As a townie, I know how much you love this town. You've touched so many lives with your compassion, your smile, your intellect, your knowledge and history of the town, your excellent relationships with people, building consensus, reaching across the aisle. So this is just the beginning for you, so I wanted to thank you personally, as Simsbury State Representative. And Senator Whitkows, we wanted to present to you a flag that was flown over the state Capitol today in your honor. I forgot the certificate.
But I wanted to present. Trust me, he says.
And you're welcome, and I didn't sing along when you did the Hamilton quotes.
And I flew that flag, by the way, last night. Lisa Hevner, so it's funny, Mary's here tonight, and Mary came to me about a decade ago, and she said, "We have this great person to run for the Board of Selectmen. Her name is Lisa. She doesn't like being around people, and she doesn't want to door knock." Wow, this is really troublesome. So I met Lisa, we started to door knocking, and now I'm a fast walker.
This is true.
Lisa, God bless her. It's like, you know, an Amish grandmother walking with her door to door, where I could do maybe 100 doors an hour. Lisa, I should have gotten a cart to pull her along.
It's true.
But I got to know Lisa door knocking, and we talked about our history, our families and our religions, and I talked about Catholicism, and she taught me about Judaism. And she taught me the word tikkun alam. Did I get it right?
Yes.
It's a Hebrew phrase that means repairing the world or healing the world, which suggests humanity's shared responsibility to heal, repair, and transform the world. And that has been your creed, really, your whole life, I believe, and certainly has been your creed as selectman and as First Selectman. You called yourself an accidental politician. There's nothing accidental about you, except the way you door knock. But you have led with distinction, with honor, honesty, integrity. You have a great mind for finance, taking care of our seniors and our schools, but I think your hallmark will be your kindness. Your kindness. And that's not something that is as much in commodity these days. And you will be remembered for your kindness to anyone who came before you in your work, in your position as leader of this town. So I wanted to wish you well. I wanted to offer a citation introduced by Senator Whitkows and myself, yet hereby known to all, that the Connecticut General Assembly hereby offers sincerest congratulations to Lisa Hevner, First Selectwoman, Town of Simsbury, in recognition of your love and dedication to the Town of Simsbury. Since first taking office in January of 2015, your hard work, openness, willingness to listen and help others have all become hallmarks of your office. You always strive to preserve the values of what Simsbury residents love about our town. You truly epitomize all the best of what public service should be. On behalf of the Citizensry of Simsbury and the State of Connecticut, we offer our deepest debt of gratitude and are confident that you will continue to remain active and integral leader in our community. So the entire membership of the Connecticut General Assembly offers our congratulations, and I offer my best wishes, love and friendship.
Thank you, David.
You don't get to toss my hair?
Good luck with that.
Why not Chris's?
You're not done yet.
We need a tube.
That was the best expression ever.
We were gonna ask for a motion to amend the agenda to do the First Selectwoman's report first, but we needed the police to bring it in. So I believe Mr. Kimball's gonna grab something, I'll stall for time and hijack your meeting here. Lisa, I've served with you at this point the longest, so it's been six years since I was first elected to this board, and I've learned a lot from you. I've appreciated, and I think we all have, we've, your engagement, your loyalty to this community, your loyalty to the people of it. We've all learned from you, your hard work, your focus. Once you get an idea, you certainly don't let it go, and that is an admirable quality. You're steadfast in it, you do your research, you do your homework, you think things through, and you do what's best for this community no matter what, and I've seen you do that time and again. Your thoughtfulness, I think John said it perfectly, with your kindness. And shouldn't be forgotten, your leadership has really, I think, charted the course not only for this board, but our subcommittees and all the folks in this room and our community to a really good place. The one thing that I've enjoyed the most, honestly, is our friendship. I think you and I have, we've certainly agreed on a number of items, we've certainly disagreed on a number of items, and that's always been okay, because it's about the ideas and the history of it, not the politics, not the, not the fighting for the sake of fighting. And I've always appreciated where you've come from, and I think, you know, I've felt that you've always listened to where I've come from, and I've always tried to make sure that I do the same with you and others. I think you've taught me a lot in my six years on this board. You know, you and I have found ourselves in a number of tight spots, number of interesting votes up here in some of our subcommittees. We've weathered a lot from challenges from residents and from financial issues, and again, I've always appreciated your perspective, your willingness to be transparent, your willingness to share openly with all of us to get to the right solution. And, you know, our two newest members asked me for the advice I could give them, and it was that. It was to carry on what you've taught all of us in terms of making sure that we're always communicating, we're always looking at it from what's best for this community, and I really appreciate that. And we're not going to miss it because you're gonna be on the Board of Finance, so we can come over. And the one thing that I'll say before I'll turn it over to my colleagues is just remember to stay in your lane on the Board of Finance.
Not gonna happen. Nothing I'll be happy about that.
So we all got together, and if you want to open the box, and then maybe Chris can go next.
It's magically sealed.
Go ahead.
Does anybody have a scissors?
Oh, come on.
I did that.
Okay, this is not happening. Elaine, you wanna help?
It is like a child's birthday party. It really is.
As much as we all want to be here for the ordinance, for the picture.
That's just you. Do you ask them water onions?
Thank you.
Here we go. I got it over one corner. Sure, make it easy now.
Yeah. Oh, and the flowers, too. Thank you, guys.
You're welcome.
I know it doesn't go with your misto.
Oh, there's a lot of stuff here, guys.
There's a lot of stuff now. I'm trying not to bump it.
Oh, my God. That is beautiful.
Yeah, it is. Hope you like it.
Oh, my God, I love it.
We all tipped it, and then.
Good.
It's a Catherine Elliot for you.
Oh, that's him. I'm just telling him I wanted a Catherine Elliot. Thank you. Thank you.
That's a perfect gift.
So Lisa, I want to pick up on two themes that Sean used, steadfast and charting, of course. The statement that I've been thinking about the last couple of days relative to you is steady at the helm. John Kennedy was a very big fan of using sailing metaphors to describe life and politics. His observation is a sailboat cast upon the sea, and his sailors on the boat control nothing, and we as humans have no control of anything in life. All we control are ourselves and our boat, but as he would point out, if you're a steady sailor, that's all you need to survive and to do well in life. You took the helm during a turbulent time, and you have been steady at the helm, your leadership was absolutely seamless. To move from that potentially turbulent time and the negative outcomes to just sailing the line perfectly and the course straight. You are a technical master of everything that we have dealt with, whether you started as the technical expert, and I believe you were the first expert on pickleball, or whether you caught up later, such as becoming a very, very deep expert on the solar wind farm project. You just technically took control of every issue that we had to deal with and became an expert on it, and that's something that's really worth admiring. But in addition to that, as Sean pointed out, your leadership has been very open, very transparent, very inclusive, and I think that, more than anything, seamlessly and immediately created a very effective team on this board. We're very proud to be a board that we think is a high-performing team. That is a direct result of the leadership that you brought to it. So the ultimate compliment is that you sailed true, you sailed brave. We all thank you very much, and we look forward to working with you in the future.
It seems like a long time since we were in PTO together, back in Henry James. I think it was, like, 10 years ago. But despite, you know, and I completely agree with what Sean and Chris have said, but you were an inspiration to me when they came to me and said, "Do you want to run for the Board of Selectmen?", and you had been there ahead of me, and it was an inspiration to me to see you ride into that position and just absorb it and love it and really work hard at it, and we can only aspire to do the same, so.
So Lisa, I'm to blame for all the First Selectman reports.
One of the best ideas you've ever had.
I give you credit on that one.
But I, your, those documents, to me, epitomize what your caring is about, what your heart is about, and it is about the town. And you never cared about, you cared about the job, but it wasn't the job. You cared about the town and made that, and brought all of us along for the ride, and I thank you for that. And we had some fun together, and hopefully, even though you're going over to the other side of the road, it's okay, and hopefully we can have some more fun, but I thank you from the bottom of my heart. Thank you very much, and your friendship. Thank you.
I have to say something.
I know. I knew everybody was gonna have so much to say, and no one expects me to be the woman of few words, but I will say, as a leader for the town, and as a colleague, and most importantly, as a friend, the highest thing I can say about you, which is, or about anybody, which is absolutely true about you, is you care deeply and passionately about other people, and you care about people so genuinely, and the town, and this board, and me personally, and I'm sure every other person in this room that is lucky enough to call you their friend can say, you care about people, and I don't think there's anything better than anyone can say.
We're not gonna do the meeting after this. Are we done? Well, I'll just go ahead and do the thing I was gonna do from the First Selectman's report, so while everyone's here, and that way if people don't want to stay for the agenda items, you don't.
No one wants to stay for the other. Me included.
You know, I would try to speak from the heart, but it would just turn into a sea of tears, so I'm not gonna be able to do that. So I did prepare a few remarks, and the first is to thank you, by you I mean the entire community, everyone in this room, for the honor and privilege of serving as your last First Selectwoman under the current form of government. I am grateful to all who walked this journey with me. It is not a road you walk alone, and I want to acknowledge my family, my husband Jim. Some of you have never seen him or met him, so Jim, if you just. You know, people forget that behind anyone who's on this board, there's a family of support, because you are out late nights, you are doing things at the last minute, and I couldn't have done any of this without my husband Jim and my sons Rob and Mike, who couldn't be here tonight. I also wanted to recognize, of course, members of the Board of Selectmen, because this really is a remarkable board, especially if you look at other towns, what we've been able to accomplish together, and I got a list to go through that. But in a short amount of time, what this board has been able to accomplish because they worked in concert with each other in coordination in a bipartisan manner, and I think Sean said it right, just doing what was best for the town always. I wanted to recognize our state delegation, John Hampton, who is also a support, town staff, community volunteers, including all those who serve on boards and commissions and volunteer in all aspects of our community, whether in church, school, by tucking in a child at night. Sometimes it's just as simple as that. And to the many, many friends, and I'm gonna take a minute to look around this room because I can't tell you how special it is to me to have so many of you here. There is a secret group that I will unsecret tonight. They're called the Non-Bunko Group, who have been advising me for, really, since I've been in the Town of Simsbury, and, you know, I'll recognize them, Sue, Sharon, Kathy. There we go. Suzanne, do I have, am I missing anyone else from that group? I got Sharon. Yeah. So you may not know that there's been this huge support group behind me, and when I am down, we have a non-bunko night, and they light a fire, and there's some stuff that goes on. I won't go into that.
Is there chocolate involved?
There's chocolate involved.
I thought so.
We've got members of the Town Committee and mentors who have been with me. I've got Mike Wong, who people may not know, who has met with me every month for the last eight years, every single month at Harvest Cafe. We are not at all from that. And I could actually go through everyone in this room. I see, you know, I see the Needums, I see the Ryans, I see the Steins, I see Amy, Lori, Chris, Eric. I do want to recognize, who am I, oh, Tara. Tara's also a member of the Non-Bunko Group, who has, actually, people may not know, has worked with me just about every week. We touch base on something. So there are so many people, when you think about this job, you think about, oh, it's just them, it's not. It is the entire community walking with you, and often people who don't get credit for it. And so, you know, I do want to recognize, of course, town staff, who is, we do have the best in the state and probably the nation. I'm putting it out there. It is true that when I stepped into this job three years ago, our community was in turmoil, and we came together and worked hard. It was not an easy task. Every one of us worked hard to turn dysfunction into a highly effective and bipartisan board, and that is the thing I am most proud of having accomplished with you. Together, we responsibly navigated the state financial crisis, instilling fiscal discipline and planning where there was none at the state level. Sorry, John, not because of you.
I think you gave it first.
Because transparency in government is the foundation of trust, we implemented a broad communications program, which, it is true, included a comprehensive First Selectwoman's Open Gov, Citizen's Guide to the Budget, a new website, and actually, social media and central administration. We introduced that. Hard to believe, it seemed so run-of-the-mill, but it wasn't, it didn't exist eight years ago, so that's kind of funny to think about how much the world has changed. To improve quality of life, we invested in town assets, including Main Street improvements, Simsbury Farms, upgrades of Town Forest Park, Greenway expansions, the creation of a new park at the Flower Bridge. We invested in community policing. I'd like to recognize the Chief I'd like to recognize the chief and the captain there. The board supported and funded community policing activities, which is why we have, in part, such a great police department. Of course, also because of the people we've hired. But their commitment to community policing. To save tax dollars, we made energy-efficient investments in regionalized services. And to preserve open space, we legislated public process before any sale. People may not realize, but this is one of the best pieces of legislation that has been passed in the state, and people don't even know we did it. But it does preserve open space. And to honor those who served our country, we supported our veterans with a beautiful new memorial. And to facilitate economic development, we started a business visitation program. I'd like to recognize Sarah Nielsen, who has helped me with that throughout Main Street. While this is not a job one does for thanks, I do want to acknowledge the many, many citizens and friends who have expressed thanks to me in these last few weeks. Your kind words mean a lot to me, and I am grateful and will always be grateful to you. These next few years will be exciting as we turn the page from one former government to the next. As noted by former President Obama, the great American experiment, for that is what democracy is, and self-governance relies on the work of all our people to give it life and shape its destiny. People think that government is done by others. It's not. It's done by us. It has been my pleasure to work with you, and I know you will continue the work of shaping Simsbury's destiny for many years to come. We are a better community because of you. And it has been my honor to serve with you. And I love you all. Thank you. Now, I don't know how we're going to go on.[708.12][708.12](laughter)[709.12][709.12](applause)
I think you should get one more picture. That represents you. Sit down there with all your supporters, seriously. I think that represents who you truly are, the community around you.
Good call.
But I want you guys with me.
Yeah, we'll come with you. Jamie, can you take one up here?
With the First Selectmen's report?[744.32][744.32](laughter) What did you guys say?
Then Sean loves it so much.
Yeah, Sean gets to.
This is going under the tree for Eleanor.[756.54][756.54](laughter)
She's going to have more fun with paper than anything else.
Joe, do you want to get in the picture?
You don't want me to picture? All right, John. We could double down.
All right. Here we go.
I know, I'll take it out.
No, own it.
Can you get the people in the back? Can you guys stand up?
All right, everybody stand up.
At least you got to look at this way, though.[782.12][782.12](laughter) Then we're just going to try a couple. We'll see how we do.
Kimball, can you help us out here?
I was going to say, I've got a teenage daughter. She's got to hold the camera up. That's the one thing I've learned, is hold the camera up.
There's no making us look like that.
She keep trying, and it just doesn't happen.
Good.
That was a fun one.
There's a lot of raps. I know.[812.62][812.62](laughter)
I'm a little back to work. I don't know how I do this now, but.
She's verklempt.
Yes.[823.12][823.12](laughter) A little bit. Thank you, everyone.
Let's get tax-free, we'll bring it right back to earth.
All right, so we will go on. We have a couple of presentations. These are the result of economic development recommendations, both from the marketing study many years ago, from the Economic Development Task Force, and from this board and what we've heard from members in the public. And we have two presentations, Doing Business in Simsbury and then Permitting, Overview and Guide. And what these are, first looks to the Board of Selectmen. They will then go on to other planning, the new Economic Development Board and other boards as well. So there will be lots of opportunities to give feedback. This is a work in progress. This is not a static document, but will change over time to be useful. I'd like to introduce Sarah Lautenslager, who's our business coordinator at the library. Sarah, I gave her the task of leading this project, and she worked in consultation with Main Street Chamber.
Thanks, Sarah.
My office, the planning departments and other departments throughout the town. And this is based on the, I'm just going to be a mess tonight, Small Business Association format. We took that as the basis, and then she adapted it to local things. And we'll go through it kind of quick, Sarah.[901.32][901.32](laughter)
My name's Sarah Lautenslager. I'm the Business Resource Center Coordinator at Simsbury Public Library. Thank you for your time and for the opportunity to speak with you this evening. I'm here to chair the Revised and Expanded Dwayne Business in Simsbury Guide that I've been working on in collaboration with Lisa Hevner, Tom Cook, James Rabbit, and Mike Glidden from the town of Simsbury, in addition to Sarah Nelson with Simsbury Main Street Partnership, and Lisa Gray with the Simsbury Chamber of Commerce. This guide is for anyone who is thinking about opening or relocating their business in Simsbury. It provides a collection of resources that potential or current business owners or entrepreneurs may browse through or reference as needed. Starting a business involves planning and work, and there are several steps and agencies involved. And there's a lot of information out there. So in support of the town's Economic Development Strategic Plan and the library's Strategic Plan, which both have goals related to entrepreneurship and supporting or attracting businesses, this guide both pulls together federal, state, and local resources to help make the process of starting or doing business in Simsbury more clear. In addition, it might help to answer some common questions that new or current business owners might have. A couple of key sources that Lisa mentioned that we utilized putting this guide together include information from the U.S. Small Business Administration, or SBA as it's referenced throughout the guides, and the Connecticut Secretary of State. These sources have a lot of great information available through their websites that we either reference or summarize and then tie in local information. And I'm sure, as many of you know, a lot of information, resources, tools, or forms live online today. Or there's a lot of tasks that can be completed or communication that happens online. So in reviewing this guide, you might have seen that there's a lot of links throughout the guide underlined in blue. This document too will be available online through the library's website under the Business section, which will make accessing those links and online resources a lot easier. And since information does change over time, it's a living document, and having an online version will allow for it to be updated and accessed over time. So I'm just browsing through it a little bit. It has several different sections on planning a business. It's the first focus, and then registering and licensing your business, and then commonly asked zoning and tax questions. And that's really, it was a collaborative effort in working with everyone to pull that information together. I welcome any questions that you have. My contact information is on the first page of the guide, or you can contact me through the library.
And Sarah is very open to suggestions. And as we see needs or something that we haven't focused on, Sarah is very open to adding to this document. It's not a static document. It is there to assist businesses, and as we find things that aren't in the document, we will certainly add them.
Yes, it's not a comprehensive document at this point in time. If it was, it would probably be a book. But it points people in the direction of places to go or resources to consult with or to websites that have more information available.
And I do want to recognize, Sarah, because this actually took a year to put together. There were so many resources and discussions and trying to understand the process. It is complicated to start a business and try to communicate it in a way that was understandable, took a lot of time. And so I do want to congratulate you for that, recognize the amount of time you put into it.
I was learning Simsbury too, having moved here from out of state. So learning that definitely helped me with getting to know the local resources a lot more too. So I appreciate the opportunity.
Any questions for Sarah?
Thank you for joining us.
Yeah. Sarah, can you just say one more time for the public in general, how they can access this information?
Yep. Online through www.simsberrylibrary.info/business. If you just go to the library website and then access the Business section, it will live on the website.
It's actually in my First Selectmen's report as well.
Oh, great. There you go. Surprise!
Which box?
I know. All of them. And actually, it's a great resource as well, if, not just starting a business, but a lot of people don't realize, if you, for young people who are trying to figure out what their career path might be, or people looking to return to the workforce, or people making career change, there are amazing work, career-related resources from starting a business on through that you are providing at the library. So thank you very much for all your hard work. It's a great resource that a lot of people might not know about.
We'll put this on our economic development page. And I'm sure the new EDC, when that's formed, you know, will let them add to it or change it or.
Decide how best to market it, to assist Sarah with that. So thank you, Sarah.
Thank you.
Next, we have Jamie Rabbit, Director of Planning, who worked with Melissa Appleby and other town departments on this guide to the planning process to assist applicants somewhat to expect when they initiate the approval process with the town. Similar to Sarah's guide, this is the result of recommendations made by the Economic Development Task Force, the marketing study, and this board, looking for ways to communicate. It goes back to our emphasis on communication. How do we communicate? And one of the things we found that has been frustrating for businesses is they don't realize how long the process takes. Or they think it takes, taking them longer than normal, when in fact, they're following the statute, the staff is following the statutory guides dictated by the state of Connecticut. It's not that there are delays. So we, Jamie tried and, working with Melissa, really came up with a format that we thought, took an extremely complex process and made it accessible. It's not, again, not complete. We'll be looking for impact. This is a first look, being given to the Board of Selectmen as the first board to see this. It will be distributed among the land use boards as well, and of course, Chamber and Main Street and anyone else who has an interest in it. And again, it's not a static document. This will be a document that will grow over time. I do want to recognize Jamie, who sort of led the content on this and really did a great job. It's part of his, one of his personal goals, to communicate in a way that's effective to the public. And I want to recognize Melissa, who did a phenomenal job working with Jamie in putting together the communication, because it really, again, a tremendous amount of work. So Jamie.
Yeah, thank you, Lisa. I'm just briefly going to go over things. The land use process from a building permit, zoning permit, is complicated for a lot of people. We do this every day in our department. We say things like 65, 35, 65, and people gloss over what does that mean. We have 65 days to schedule a hearing. We have 35 days to close a hearing. We have 65 days to make a decision. Add all that time up, and that's seven months. If you add the ability for two 65-day extensions, if we need them during the permitting process. And that's without any other moving parts. So we can move things, we try effectively to move things from the left side of the desk to the right side of the desk as quickly and as efficiently as possible for the business side. A lot of times, there are a lot of applications with a lot of moving parts that actually need action from outside agencies. But a lot of times, people ask us simple questions, and we're attempting to put out a document that answers some of those simple questions. It also lays out a few things. The document's laid out, in essence, in roles and responsibilities for staff and departments within the land use and building permit process, the contact information for those individuals involved in that permitting process, as well as example permitting processes and who is involved in them, both commercially and multifamily is broken out, as well as residential from that other division. With regards to the document, there are multiple departments involved in this. I'd like to thank a few departments. The Building Department was involved, my Zoning Department was involved, Engineering, Public Works, WPCA, as well as the Fire Marshal. And I mentioned those six entities, because those are also the six entities that are involved in the permitting process. That's just, in some aspects, to get a simple garage addition. There may be references and referrals to six departments that have to review this in efficient manner and get it out in a timely, statutorily required timeframe. I'd also, as Lisa mentioned, Melissa was a great help with putting this document together. Lisa will let you know that occasionally I get sidetracked via requests that come through the Selectmen's office. And Melissa did an excellent job of keeping both me personally focused and our department focuses on producing the product. And Mr. Cook's laughing.[1457.41][1457.41](laughter) We did have many discussions on font size and photographs, but I'd like to just mimic some of the things that Lisa. This is not intended to be an end-all, be-all document. This is not a static document. It needs to be refined and revised over time. We work in a very complicated world with regards to timeframes and statutory requirements that are further complicated as decisions made by the court system on a monthly basis, both within Connecticut and nationally. So our job to keep track of this is influenced by a lot of factors on the outside. With regards to that, I don't want to take up any more of your time unless you have some questions.
I just want to, we do have two members from Planning and Zoning in the audience, and want to thank them because it will be coming your way.[1509.12][1509.12](laughter) We wanted to give the first look to the Board of Selectmen and then, because it is, it's not like the old days where you write a document, it's on the shelf, it's done. This is, it will be a dynamic document. There'll be opportunities to add to it, detract from it. Think about different ways you want to do things. We already know we're going to add gent, that's one thing. That's coming up, that wasn't in this document. So there will be a document that will change over time, and we look forward to getting Boarding Commission and the public's input on this, because we wanted to work for.
And one thing, a lot of people have questions about the Form Based Code. This document does not attempt to cover the Form Based Code. We have two sections of towns covered by that. In essence, it says, "Call the Planning Director if you have questions on the Form Based Code." Because even staff on our level has trouble digesting the information contained in the Form Based Code. So we understand that the public may have questions with regards to the Form Based Code also.
Thank you, Jamie. Thank you, Melissa. Very nicely done. All right, moving on to action. Oh, well, I've got the First Selectmen's report, which I may forego tonight.[1578.62][1578.62](laughter) There's lots of good stuff in there. And I do want to mention, including a welcome to Maria Capriola, Simsbury's new town major.
I think Sean should sing it.
Really want that to happen?
No, that was a joke.
I'm not nominated for a Grammy.
I think Tom Cook should sing.
If anyone's going to sing, it'll be you. Okay, we're going to zip through our action items. May I have a motion to approve tax refunds in the amount of $14,646.01?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously. Action item B is to authorize the First Selectwoman to execute a contract with Make Media for the 2018 Simsbury Mini Maker Fair. This event is being sponsored by the library and co-sponsored by Simsbury Main Street Partnership. It is the Second Annual Simsbury Maker Fair, which will be held on May 5, 2018, from 10 to 4:00. So we're excited about that. I see Lisa Cream is in the audience. I want to recognize her for initiating this project and her staff. It is being funded through a gift to the library Board of Trustees. Just to remind the board, gifts to the library Board of Trustees actually do not need to be approved by the Board of Selectmen. They have separate authorization to accept gifts. As well as sponsorships and in-kind support from local organizations and businesses, this contract has been reviewed and approved by council. Lisa, did you have anything to add to this? It's similar to what we did the year before, so. With that, may I have a motion to authorize the First Selectwoman to sign the contract with Make Media in support of the 2018 Makers Fair?
So moved.
So moved.
We'll go with Elaine and Chris. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously. Before you is a motion to approve the revision to the acceptable use policy. If you recall, the acceptable use policy was first presented to the Board of Selectmen on October 11. At that time, before view, the board asked for certain revisions. During discussion on the policy, a question was raised regarding the town's ability to take action against an employee who improperly uses town resources to view sexually explicit material. After following up with town council on this matter, we are recommending the addition to the policy of the following language under prohibited activities. The additional language would read, "Accessing adult content, including but not limited to sexually explicit material." Lisa, just in case you're wondering, we did check to make sure it's in compliance with the library, and this is about town use employees for town work, so you're good. Does anyone have any questions about that? So it's just a one-sentence addition, but because it was material, we did bring it back to the board. May I have a motion to approve the acceptable use policy with the additional language in the prohibited activities section?
So moved. Second.
So Cheryl, was that you made the motion?
Yeah.
Cheryl, Chris, any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously. Item D is to approve the draft 2017 Local EMS Plan. Municipalities are required to submit local EMS plans to the Connecticut Department of Health's Office of Emergency Medical Services every five years. Health's Office of Emergency Medical Services every five years. The plan is required to identify the public safety answering point responsible for receiving calls and dispatching providers, identify the entity responsible for each level of EMS response, establish EMS performance standards that describe mutual aid agreements. Melissa Appleby, thank you, she had a lot on the agenda tonight, coordinated the effort in collaboration with the Simsbury Police Department, the Simsbury Volunteer Ambulance, the Fire District, and town staff. This proposal was unanimously approved by the Public Safety Committee. I'll open it up to questions, and start with Sean, if you have any, since you chaired public safety.
No, I would just second that. Melissa, you did an outstanding job working with all the entities from our public safety standpoint to make sure that this was comprehensive and appropriate. So thank you for your work there. And as you mentioned, Lisa, it was unanimously endorsed, without question, by the Public Safety Subcommittee last week, or two weeks ago, excuse me.
Are there any other questions? I may have a motion to approve the 2017 local EMS plan to authorize the first, and to authorize the first selectwoman to sign the submission.
So moved.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously. This is item E, we have to see Don Rieger in the audience. I told him I'd get this on the agenda before I left. To set a public hearing date of January 8, 2018, at 6:00 p.m. for the proposed water shortage ordinance. We thought about doing it in December, but that is not enough time to get it in the newspaper with notice. The purpose of the ordinance is to protect the public health, welfare, and welfare, and implements the town's authority to impose water use restrictions conditioned upon a finding by the Board of Selectmen that a water shortage or state groundwater depletion exists, or upon a state of water use restrictions, or a declaration of public drinking water supply emergency issued by the Department of Public Health pursuant to Connecticut General Statute 25-32B. At the time of the initial discussion of the proposed ordinance, some members of the Board of Selectmen expressed some concern about different aspects of the ordinance, and came together as a subcommittee, like it goes back to how we work in a collaborative manner, it's okay to disagree. We asked Chris and Mike to see if they could work together on compromised language with council, that would be remenable to them. I'll open it up to Chris and then Mike as to the changes to highlight for the public, but they will be published. And so this is not a substantive discussion, this is just setting the dates, but if there's anything you wanted to highlight.
Yeah, I mean, I wouldn't highlight anything specifically. We do have a document that captures what the changes were based upon the input at the last meeting. The subcommittee met twice in both March and June, and Bob thought that there was enough substantive changes that it warranted having the additional hearing before final approval, so.
And to Chris's point, we met, we talked about a number of different things, came at it from a couple different ways, and I think, to the extent we could, we captured everything that was discussed in this document, and look forward to having a discussion in January.
I do wanna recognize the Conservation Commission, who, which is the committee that initiated this process, and Don Rieger, who worked with both Chris and Mike, and Marjorie Winner, Chairman of the Conservation Commission on this. So thank you to you, and we look forward to your comments. And Eric, I'm handing it over to you for the January agenda. With that, may I have a motion to set a public hearing date for the proposed water shortage ordinance as revised January 8, 2018?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously.
Can't agree on everything.
You can agree on setting the hearing. You can vote no against it after the hearing.
Government overreach.
Aye, stop.
Can we recommend to the next board they name it the Askem Water Ordinance?
Absolutely.
Okay, I just wanted to kinda.
I'm naming the Suez River.
We'll go on to appointments and residences. We will do most of the appointments that are coterminous with the Board of Selectmen, those will be done on December 4. So we just have one tonight that is separate from that, and that is, may I have a motion to appoint Lori Coppinger-D as a regular member of the Culture Parks and Recreation Commission with an expiration date of January 1, 2022?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously. You also have copies of the minutes. Before you, if there are no changes, the minutes will stand as final. So please take a second to review the minutes and let me know if you have any changes. That, the minutes will stand, saying none. We'll go on to liaison reports. I did wanna just give a quick update on Deepwater Wind. Submissions are due, they'll be going into the citing council on December 1. There are council briefs at that point, so our council is reviewing those. In terms of spending, we're at about $36,000, and I do anticipate that to go up, because we have had to rely on our consultant in preparation of the final documents being put in there. So that's just an item to watch. We have been monitoring it closely, Mr. Kimball is aware of it. I did advise the Board of Finance that this was gonna go over budget, so they are aware of that as well. There's nothing to be done about that. We must, when they ask for information, we must provide it.
And everyone's done a really exceptional job. We've definitely gotten quality work out of both town staff and our consultants on the matter, I think.
And I do have some sad news tonight to report, or I should say disappointing news. Literally about 10 minutes before the meeting, we were notified that they are no longer going to fund the Main Street sidewalk improvements for $400,000 that we had received earlier in the year with Main Street Partnership. They ran out of money. This is our state doing their thing again. But on the positive side, we did receive a grant for the library grant did come through. So I cannot explain to you why and what, except that they're different departments. So that may come back to you in terms of the capital improvement plan, so if you could just write a note on that, you may see that again in a different capacity. It's not gonna come through grant funding. So those are the main updates I have. Does anyone else have any other updates?
A quick community for care. We were able to reschedule the, the group that's going to come in in January, January 10, at 6:00 p.m. at the library, to discuss mental health issues, particular to the LGBTQ community, and public participation is welcome, and we should have a really great panel available to discuss those issues.
Excellent. Thank you for your efforts on that. That really is phenomenal. And if you can't make the meeting, it will be on SCTV.
It absolutely will.
Okay. Sean.
Two quick ones from public safety. There was two matters that came up during New Business. One is, there was a request from the Silvermans Group, Silverman Group was developing the Hartford property, to look into an agreement, an easement, access to the Wheaton Fire Station site for purposes of accessing the rails to trails, which is located on the backside of the site. The, the Fire District at this point has, has said no to access the site, but that they were willing to work with, work with the developer on alternatives, and they wanted to make us aware of that vote. Public safety did, should say the right word here, we did support, from a public safety standpoint, their, their hesitancy to allow access to the site. And for those that might not be familiar, that's where the training facility is, the burn building, as well as the active fire station to Wheaton. So from a public safety standpoint, and all the experts, police, fire, ambulance, public works, town staff, and the rest of us, you simply can't have pedestrians accessing that site on a regular basis when, again, active training, active, active fire calls, that's just, that's a recipe for a bad idea. But I think the town is, is willing to help facilitate access to our, our resources. We've just gotta figure out how to do that. Obviously, there's DOT issues with crossing the road, which is outside our purview, crosswalks and lights and all that, but again, just wanted to make sure that was on everybody's radar and the public's radar. So again, not unwilling to work with the Silverman folks on access, it just needs to be done in a thoughtful, safe way, and I'm sure they're willing to do the same.
Jamie's already initiated conversations on this, he'll work carefully, incorporating those concerns.
No doubt, and I'm sure, and that's, you know, basically what we said, was the town staff would have it well in hand, and that we would, we would revisit the matter if needed. The second is, there was a request from some folks in the bicycling community, biking community, to potentially review town ordinances with respects to riding on sidewalks, whether that be removing the ordinance, whether that be amending the ordinance to allow for children or for elderly folks, or perhaps a certain speed. So the charge that the Public Safety Subcommittee gave back to the bicycle folks was to review that with all of the appropriate town staff, the police department, the town manager, and the first selectman's office going forward, and then bring that proposal back to the Public Safety Subcommittee with either positive or neutral referrals from all those groups, and then we would potentially consider that. But we needed to make sure that that was fully vetted from a public safety standpoint, so we did not take that matter up. But if folks are interested in it, it is something that we're potentially going to consider. So just wanted to make everybody aware of that.
Thank you, we appreciate that. And thanks to the Bike Pad Committee for bringing.
Yeah, it's a good idea. We gotta look at it.
So, Eric, another thing on your list. We will be setting the agendas going forward. And so with that.
Lisa, real quick.
Yeah.
The Clean Energy Task Force met last week to allocate some funds that they had earned, for lack of a better term, through the solar projects in town, not the deepwater project, to do a study for a microgrid from the high school to Salter's bus, which was something that they've been working on for a couple of years almost, and potentially doing some work to be able to have that as a self-supporting microgrid in the event of another horrible October storm. So they worked on that last week, and step one would be to do this feasibility study, and they have the funds to do that.
Great. Does that need to come before the board, or do they have?
I don't know. I was going to talk to Mr. Cook if I can get him before he runs out the door to find out, but he and Melissa to find out.
Okay, perfect. Great. All right, thank you for that update. One of the things people may not realize is members of the Board of Selectmen are liaison to really lots and lots of boards, so it's not just coming to the meetings, they work tremendous hours, and so I do wanna recognize all of you for that, and the way you've communicated with this board about issues of importance to us. And with that, it is my pleasure, honor, and sadness to ask for a motion to adjourn.